I really don't shock quite like I used to.
Yeah, I'm like there for something like, I can't, they don't care any of a sudden. I look at yourself and say, like, I lost this one. Several years.
Fifteen seconds.
I went all the way straight side. Like, but never. I like that one market. I wanted that. And it was, it was, you know, a good deal. But then.
All right, six o'clock. I'd like to welcome everybody to the March tenth, twenty twenty five work session for the town of Aberdeen. And we're glad you're here. Got Anna over the corner, some other people here tonight. Thank you for coming out on the night that Tim chose. Thank you for that weather, Tim.
You're welcome.
First item on the agenda is consider approval of the American Legion Post seventy-two Home Heroes Banner Program. This one is Lamille.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners, everyone. I have with me the mock-up banner for this particular request. This is the formal request presented originally at the previous meeting. Mr. Palmer is here from the American Legion Post seventy-two, which is right down the street. And so we met and had conversations. This is one of five initial style banners. Now, of course, the terminology and things would be appropriate and for Aberdeen specifically. But the initial request would be for five banners funded by, on behalf of the town, to get the program started. And then a fundraising program initiated by the American Legion to have follow-on sponsorships from families, loved ones, and other members of the community. And I know Mr. Palmer and I had conversations. If there's any questions for him in particular about the long-term plans for the program, he's more than happy to answer those as well. But we did verify that these are the exact same size banners that we do currently have throughout downtown. Suggested the initial location would best be appropriate for the main street area based on the size of the banners and the poles that we do have there right now. And with the initial ask of five, they would certainly fit alternating on either side of the street as well. Any questions?
Is this KIA, MIA, or who?
It's any, can include both living and deceased active-duty members and first responders. So it's not just MIA or POWs. So it's to honor any of those who were actually from Aberdeen. So it's restricted to Aberdeen citizens, so to speak. And we can honor any firefighters, police, any law enforcement, first responders of any kind. And even if there's active-duty military that we know from Aberdeen that have received some kind of a high honor, we can honor them as well. So it's kind of, it's kind of open. I suppose you could put one up there of me if you want.
That's fine. No, no, you live in Ho- you live in Ho-Kam. Excuse you.
Well, I don't, I don't want my picture.
You're excused. You're in Ho-Kam.
And now it's Carthage is doing the same thing.
Yeah, I saw that. Yeah, Carthage is doing, other places have done it, yeah. I know that in World War II particularly, there were four that were killed that were members of Page's church. But I've only found three pictures. And I'm not sure where I can find the fourth picture. I'd love to have them recognized. And Allison Page, there's a street in Aberdeen named Allison Page Street off of Highway five. And he was from Page's church, and he was killed in the First World War. And I don't know where to find a picture of him either. I'd love to find some of these pictures. If you know how to find them, let me know.
We can dig around. And that's one thing I'd like to bring up, since you mentioned that, is that if anybody has any ideas of who they want for the first five, I've been doing my own research, but the more that we have to choose from, the better.
Sure. I don't know what the other mainline churches, the Presbyterian Church, the Baptist Church, I don't know if they have their listings or not, but that'd be somewhere to check with the two main churches. Because I know what Page has, but I don't know about the Baptist Church, the Presbyterian Church.
One of the two that I had on my list is obviously Robert Newton Page, the third, who was the mayor. And also, you know, John Lawrence Rowe. I think those are two strong candidates.
They are. There was a, gosh, I have to think of his name. I know he grew up on that house across from the fire department, the two-story gray house. That was his home, and I can't think of his home back then, the family that lived there. He was killed on Leeway June. So we do have a, we do have one that was killed on Leeway June. And I, I can find his name, but I haven't got a picture.
There's a guy who lived on, up Poplar, I think on Leeway June.
I really don't shop quite like I used to.
Yeah, I'm like there for something like, I can't, they don't care any of these things. Like I lost this one several years ago. I went all the way to try to sell it. But I like that one market. I wanted that. And it was, it was a good deal.
All right, six o'clock. I'd like to welcome everybody to the March tenth, twenty twenty five work session for the town of Aberdeen. And we're glad you're here. Got Anna over the corner, some other people here tonight. Thank you for coming out on the night that Tim chose. Thank you for that weather, Tim.
You're welcome.
First item on the agenda is consider approval of American Legion Post seventy-two Home Heroes Banner Program. This one is Lamille.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners, everyone. I have with me the mock-up banner for this particular request. This is the formal request presented originally at the previous meeting. Mr. Palmer is here from the American Legion Post seventy-two, which is right down the street. And so we met and had conversations. This is one of five initial style banners. Now, of course, the terminology and things would be appropriate and for Aberdeen specifically. But the initial request would be for five banners funded by, on behalf of the town, to get the program started. And then a fundraising program initiated by the American Legion to have follow-on sponsorships from families, loved ones, and other members of the community. And I know Mr. Palmer and I had conversations. If there's any questions for him in particular about the long-term plans for the program, he's more than happy to answer those as well. But we did verify that these are the exact same size banners that we do currently have throughout downtown. Suggested the initial location would best be appropriate for the main street area based on the size of the banners and the poles that we do have there right now. And with the initial ask of five, they would certainly fit alternating on either side of the street as well. Any questions?
Is this KIA, MIA, or who?
It's any, can include both living and deceased active-duty members and first responders. So it's not just MIA or POWs. So it's to honor any of those who were actually from Aberdeen. So it's restricted to Aberdeen citizens, so to speak. And we can honor any firefighters, police, any law enforcement, first responders of any kind. And even if there's active-duty military that we know from Aberdeen that have received some kind of a high honor, we can honor them as well. So it's kind of, it's kind of open. I suppose you could put one up there of me if you want.
That's fine. No, no, you live in Hope County. Excuse you.
Well, I don't want my picture.
You're excused. You live in Hope County.
And no, it's Carthage is doing the same thing.
Yeah, I saw that. Yeah, Carthage is doing, other places have done it, yeah. I know that in World War II particularly, there were four that were killed that were members of Page's church. But I've only found three pictures, and I'm not sure where I can find the fourth picture. I'd love to have them recognized. And Allison Page, there's a street in Aberdeen named Allison Page Street off of Highway five. And he was from Page's church, and he was killed in the First World War. And I don't know where to find a picture of him either. I'd love to find some of these pictures. If you know how to find them, let me know.
We can dig around, and that's one thing I'd like to bring up, since you mentioned that, is that if anybody has any ideas of who they want for the first five, I've been doing my own research, but the more that we have to choose from, the better.
Sure. I don't know what the other mainline churches, the Presbyterian Church, the Baptist Church, I don't know if they have their listings or not, but that'd be somewhere to check with the two main churches. Because I know what Page has, but I don't know about the Baptist Church, the Presbyterian Church.
One of the two that I had on my list is obviously Robert Newton Page, the third, who was the mayor.
Yeah.
And also, you know, John Lawrence Rowe.
Sure, yeah.
I think those are two strong candidates.
They are. There was a, gosh, I have to think of his name. I know he grew up on that house across from the fire department, the two-story gray house. That was his home, and I can't think of his home back then, the family that lived there. He was killed on Leeway June. So we do have a, we do have one that was killed on Leeway June. And I can find his name, but I haven't got a picture.
There's a guy who lived on, up Poplar, I think on like Fifth Street or something, somewhere in that area up there. His last name, I think, is Ivy. He was killed in Vietnam.
He was a Vietnam KIA.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have a Vietnam KIA from Aberdeen, Vietnam.
Okay.
His name was Ivy. Joel, Joel.
So I would offer a Terrence Hellman's to be the point of contact with my email address. Have anybody and everybody send me ideas and information. And I'm willing to do all the research I can. If there's a missing picture, I can go try to find one. If we need more information on the specifics of an individual and how he served, I could go look for that.
If you would send your email to Clark, and she can send it out to us and we could
Lindy has
Oh, Lindy, you have it.
Yes, sir, I do.
Lindy already has it.
If you'll let us have it.
I sure.
We can start looking up some names and
I'm kind of jumping ahead. I'm assuming if this is approved.
Yeah, well. Yeah, what else we need to know about this?
The, the location right now with the five, it was discussed. We have about, I think it's twenty-two small banner poles. These would be the decorative Duke Energy Poles with the black casing, the bulbs on the top. So those are mostly on Main, West Main Street and Sycamore Street right now. There would be more potentially in the future with future installation. But right now with the limited amount, that's something that we spoke about with Mr. Palmer, to just be considerate of how many poles we have that would be available. Eleven, it depends on if they're alternating, if they're on every single pole, just the number and location would need to be considered. At the same time, there's three different dates that are proposed for when they would be displayed. And it would be Memorial Day, Fourth of July, and also Veterans Day. And the request would be for it to be installed and for it to be displayed for either a weekend, if it's appropriate based on where the days fall, or for at least a period of three days for the installation, the day prior, display for a full day, and the day after before it's taken down. So there would be essentially three periods which these would be displayed throughout the year. This would also be in conjunction with the timeframe where the current flat patriotic American flag banners would be installed as well. And that's already on a rotating schedule that Public Works has. So they all, they already know when those banners would go up. This would be in addition to that, but for shorter periods of time when they are. And that would be based off of those specific holidays that are requested.
And the Legion would maintain the banners during the times they're not being displayed. So that way we can display it within the Legion itself.
True.
And who will use that?
Only three days? Is that long? That's how long they're going to be up?
That would be the, that was the initial request, was for a shorter weekend period of time. But that would be based on the preference of the board.
I think you need to treat them as a special occasion item rather than have them up all the time because it takes away from them.
Sure.
I think you were thinking longer period of time, like over, like over Fourth of July weekend or something like that.
Well, I mean, that's a lot of putting them up for just three days. I know it's not
We can leave them up longer. I'd be happy for that. That was just the minimum request.
Okay, oh, okay.
I think with the schedule of weekends and days and if Joe's guys are doing it, putting it up, if it's three days one time and the next time it's five days, nobody's going to get concerned.
No.
It's just kind of some of those things, because to say it's exactly three days might be a problem depending on what it ends on. But yeah, it's for five or six days.
Fourth of July is on Thursday or Friday. You put it up on the Wednesday prior and let it run through the weekend.
Right.
Yeah.
And you can fit it in with how they currently do things, whatever your, you know, op plan is for that. You can, you can just do it the same with these.
Okay.
So did, did you want to talk about the quote?
Yes, sir.
I got a quote of four hundred and fifty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents for the five banners. That excludes tax. We'd have to add tax on that. So it's less than five hundred dollars, or it'll come to probably about five hundred with tax.
And those are using our existing brackets?
Right, we're not applying brackets, no brackets. That was a really good thing, that the town already has the exact size brackets that we need. I was happy to see.
So if there's an applicant after the fact, you had talked about the fee, you know, paid by the family or whomever, to cover that, like the new banner? Do you have an amount of that so they kind of know going into it that we could address here?
Is seek sponsors for future banners from the families of the service member or the first responder. And their actual, the family name would actually go at the bottom of the banner showing that they're sponsoring it. And then they would pay for the full cost of it.
Do you have an idea of what, what a single banner would cost you?
A hundred bucks, about a hundred dollars, because they're four fifty-nine for five.
Eighty, eighty-four ninety-five.
Plus that.
Yeah.
Eighty-four ninety-five.
And I guess you're probably getting them cheaper the more you order, probably.
Right now, we got the minimum order, so we save any kind of a service fee.
Okay.
So I wanted to make sure that, you know, we did it smartly. Always looking at after every dime, especially trying to keep that Legion open. That's true.
Absolutely.
With the gas, gas prices have gone up and utilities, oh my goodness.
I'll make a motion that we approve the American Legion seventy-two Hometown Heroes Banner Program.
Motion is second. Further discussion. I'd like to thank House seventy-two for coming, and especially you coming up with this, and thank all of your members.
I will. We're having a meeting tonight, and I'm going to go since I leave here.
Please, please give them a
And I'll pass that on and let them know we're approved. I appreciate everybody, and I think this is going to be a good thing for the town.
Sure.
I'm really excited about it.
Yes.
Yeah.
On one occasion, people have asked me, what is Aberdeen doing? Because we always go to Carthage for the different states, so this would be something very nice. Just would be a lot different.
We do.
And people in service.
It's a military town, training town. It's a, I think it'll help add some appeal to people coming to visit the town as well.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
And your meeting is tonight.
It is right now.
And thank you for coming.
Oh, no problem, no problem at all.
Number two, consider approval of resolution number twenty-five oh five to open a fifteen-foot covered right-of-way off of Thomas Avenue and authorize the town of Aberdeen to execute the right-of-way maintenance agreement.
Thank you, Mayor. We've been working with both the town manager and the town attorney on this, on this item. We had a bit of an unusual, although probably not unique, situation with this property. And let me just, this is a nineteen twenty-eight plaque that shows this, but I'll go back to that in a moment. This property, which, this is Thomas Avenue running north and south. And even though GIS turns the right-of-way, there's no actual road on it. And I was contacted by Ms. Kathy McNeil, who's joining us this evening. She is one of the owners of this property, and it's essentially landlocked, particularly with properties to her west having been developed and there not being any means of accessing the property. There's no home on it, but she's, of course, precluded from, from developing the property without some access. So in speaking with TC, he offered a couple of options. And one of those was to actually open this right-of-way. I'm going to go to this middle slide because this is from this nineteen twenty-eight clad. And any of you that have looked at plaques from this time period know that they, they platted out very narrow lots. And her property consists of these, of these four that is at the end of this unnamed street. And this would be Thomas Avenue running, running here. So TC had proposed that we actually open the right-of-way. It was never formally accepted by the town in, in the nineteen twenties or thirties when this property was laid out. And also to create a maintenance agreement for the right-of-way that would do a couple of things, and he's been very specific about what can and cannot happen there. What can happen there is that the McNeils can build a driveway from Thomas Avenue to access the property at their own cost. And that the town is not obligated in any way to, to maintain that right-of-way at any point. So that's included in the, in the agreement, which is a legal agreement that the town, that McNeils have already signed. The clerk has that copy with the original signatures. And then if the board agrees to this, the town could sign that as well. And then TC and his, his team also created a resolution that would officially open, open that right-of-way.
Is there a driveway there now? There's nothing there, just street.
You can't get to it?
Absolutely not.
There's no way to get to it.
Good evening, everyone. It's a house adjacent to my property. And the only way you can assess it, she does have like a dirt driveway, but you can't drive onto the property. You have to get out of your vehicle and walk across her property in order to assess mine. And I can't get in there, you know, by, I don't need it or anything. So I don't have accessibility.
Do you know how wide that
It's fifteen feet.
Fifteen feet.
So it's, it's enough for a driveway, not enough for
Not for ten lanes.
For a road.
No, driveway, fifteen feet.
And with this, you know, property to the west being developed, the, the, there would never be any intention of pushing that road through. As Ms. McNeil said, there is a home here, and then there's a, a property here next to her. And with the road never actually being developed, it's just, it's grown up to the point where you, you, I don't, I don't believe you can really see that, that there ever was a right-of-way there.
On the right, there's no house on the right, right there.
I believe that's correct. I believe the home that you're speaking of, Ms. McNeil, is closer to Thomas.
Yes, it's on the left of Thomas, at the end, the very end.
It's sort of that intersection.
And then adjacent to that particular home is my property.
Fifty-four oh oh six does not have a house.
This large piece here.
Yeah, it does not have There's no house there. Okay. There's no house on that.
There is no house on that one. And Ms. McNeil mentioned that she had made attempts to work with the property owner here to, to create some sort of agreement between the two of them, that she could access this through their property. And those, those efforts were not successful. So she reached out to me to see if there was any mechanism that the town had at our disposal to, to allow her access. It's, it's a landlocked piece of property.
Sure. Yeah, that, the one beside it's like
It is.
So the, the, the property where the, actually the alley or the driveway would be, who owns that? Is it whoever right in front of it?
It would be considered town property. It's, it's a, it's an unopened right-of-way that we claim. But, but having never been opened, this resolution sort of provides that legal mechanism for, for it being accessible. And then TC wanted to combine that with the maintenance agreement that makes it clear that the town is not developing a road there and has no maintenance responsibility over that right-of-way, but that we would allow a driveway to be built.
So the owner of fifty-two six oh six has no right to it either? I mean, they can't keep her from making the driveway there.
Yeah, to be honest with you, when I look, when I went down there, it's clear that they have, we're still on the corner. And they have created a drive using part of the, the right-of-way just to reach their property. But it doesn't go beyond that, and it's very grown up beyond that.
So they would have to maintain their piece of it?
No, we'll maintain it. It's our right-of-way. Once we open it, we'll maintain it from Thomas Avenue to the end.
No.
No.
The maintenance agreement absolves us of that.
We're just given the right to put the At this point.
Okay.
It's just like, it's ours, but it's their private driveway, basically. Not private, but it's their driveway.
So we're not, we're not maintaining it. Okay, all right.
Can we like sell it to them for like a dollar?
We could. We'd have to go through, I think, the abandonment of property thing. And I think that goes equally to both sides. There might be another way to sell it intact, you know, like, you know, when you abandon right-of-ways, how it goes half to half. If you're truly abandoning, if you're selling it, there's a way to do that. It's a little bit more complicated, but it, it could in theory happen. But I think it might just be, it might just be just how he's better gets it, which might be kind of awkward.
It might be, Tim, if somebody bought the, if you're talking about selling it, that fifty-four oh oh six, if they bought it, they could close it.
Right.
And then it should be landlocked again.
Then it should be landlocked again. Right.
And if you abandon it, like Paul said, then you, half of it goes to the northern properties, the other half goes to the southern properties, and it's still landlocked again.
Seven and a half feet.
You have to give everybody a chance to bid on it.
Seven and a half feet is all you get, so that wouldn't work.
So this is the best option, sounds like.
That's exactly right. We explored that as an option. And after realizing it was only fifteen feet wide, and the way the statute reads, that she would only have use of seven and a half feet of it, which really wouldn't be sufficient for a driveway.
It's a good, it's a good result. It gives her access to property. And just for the record, I'll state that this is why we now have subdivision ordinances and planned zoning rules. Every time, every time developers complain about them is to avoid people getting landlocked like this and to make sure they're not landlocked, so.
And this, that plant was in the nineteen twenties, did you say?
Yes, sir, nineteen twenty-eight.
They had plenty of those.
Nineteen twenty-eight.
Plenty of those in everything. It's great. But they would have to maintain that, the first part of it. The owner number one of the front would maintain that piece, right? Well, you would hope they'd maintain it so she could get back there too. She could get back there. That's what I mean. Yeah, it's just, it'd be a dirt road. It's just going to be a dirt road. Yes.
Yeah, I mean, it's just going to be, I mean, basically, it's like people who own gravel driveways on property, that they own everything, they have to maintain the driveway. They have to go out there and get somebody to cut it, clear it. If it needs gravel or something, just have to do it once in a while. And if there's other developers or owners that join in that, hopefully there'd be some agreement where they would share in that, in that cost.
Are we going to have to get the survey?
I mean, we're not. I mean, I think it'll have to be marked. It'll, it will have to be surveyed, but I think the, the owner will have to do that. Because they'll have to have it marked, survey to have it cleared, you know, if they have a property cut. So they're on their property, not on the private, or the, yeah, the private, private lives.
Anymore?
Do you know that, the people that own the front, front end?
You mean adjacent to my property?
Yeah.
Yeah, I've, I've spoken
So they're aware that you're involved in this, that you're going to be creating?
Yeah, well, she realizes that I need assistance.
Okay, well, that's good. At least they're sharing a relationship with them. Which I've known in the past, people who lived, you know, had to get a right-of-way and wasn't always a happy thing, you know? But that's good. She's on your side.
All right. Sounds good.
Any other questions?
Somebody want to make a motion? Yeah, I'll make a motion that we open the fifteen-foot up right-of-way off of Thomas Avenue and authorize the town manager to execute the right-of-way maintenance agreement. And there's a second. Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You got it.
You're welcome.
It was very nice to meet you.
Have a safe travel home.
Thank you for bringing this to us. Number three, consider scheduling a public hearing on March twenty-four, twenty twenty-five at six p.m. for amendment, amendment to the previously approved planned development of Aberdeen Station, submitted by the Lemos.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a little bit deja vu because we did this last year, but for different reasons. And this has gone to the planning board. The Lemoses have taken a closer look at the list of allowable uses in the planned development document that was originally drafted by the town. And just to have more flexibility with the options for uses on the property and have a viable development, they have asked if that list of uses could be changed only for the property, not for the residential area and not for the area that the town will, will retain, but for the area that's retail and what they've called existing buildings and new retail. So there is a list of uses that they have asked for consideration. And this would be an amendment to the planned development document. Any change in the list of uses does have to receive approval from the board. And I encourage them to look at this closely. They are, of course, trying to market and finance their development interests there. And they, you know, have put a bit, a, a good bit of time in this. They've had a couple of proposals come their way, including a daycare. And with that not being on the list of allowable uses and not even a, you know, a broad category that that might fall into, they had to say no to an interested party. So they came to me with that. I said, that has to go to the board. And at that point, I encouraged them to look more closely at this. And I said, let's go to the board one time with a list of potential uses that you I said, that has to go to the board and at that point, I encouraged them to look more closely at this and I said, let's go to the board one time with a list of potential uses that you. Still help make this project viable and so they'd like to come to you on the twenty-fourth and make that request.
I'll make a motion that we schedule a public hearing on March twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five at six o'clock. Amendments to the previously approved plan development from Aberdeen Station submitted by Fabio Lemos.
I'll second.
Motion is second. This is, this will be a public hearing.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. All right, any discussion?
The last one was rather long, so hopefully this will not be quite as long.
Full of discussion.
Never know.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Number four, grant agreement by between the Cannon Foundation Inc. and the Town of Aberdeen. Consider acceptance of the grant.
So Mayor, this was uh what I mentioned um last Friday, um this was the most recent award to the Friends of Library. Well, to the library, it's actually a word to the town, but uh they did all the footwork on this application. So this is a grant for a hundred thousand dollars, uh basically to the town for use for the improvements to the library. So we got the official notice, I think, really just on Thursday, maybe. And um I got another notice today from the foundation again and so they're just, you know, wanting to get the paperwork done and uh and move forward. Um, there is a um every, I think it's quarterly, uh don't quote mine back, cause I haven't seen a lot on the detail of like how you administer the grant. But it looks pretty standard, pretty straightforward. So basically, um, uh the Friends of Library has agreed to kind of do an edited report, send it to us and we'll send it in. Whether it's monthly or every three months, I think it's every quarter, um just to keep the foundation up to up to date. So pretty straightforward, but uh yeah, it's good, helps us with um some of the improvements we're working on now and then. Uh, potentially for some of the interior improvements too later on. So congrats to um all those who worked on this and um it's a good a good notice stuff for the library.
Yes, cause of that project ordinance, so pretty good.
Yeah, it would, and it's one whose revenue is project order.
The same one we have.
Yes, sir.
For the.
And I would put the money when it's received at the capital management trust in the library.
Sure.
So yeah, but it basically puts it into that capital management trust account. So and then when it gets used, then it officially goes into the project ordinance and shows up there, right, Budge?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Based on what they're building over there, it won't stay in the law.
But it doesn't like to just to put money in something that's not been spent yet, so.
Any idea if if that's a one-time check or it's more than do it in payments or installments?
We kind of got word unofficially that we think it's a one-time upfront check.
I think it is.
Yeah, which would be nice.
Well, that's fine, just didn't know.
Yeah. Yeah.
So do we need a motion to consider acceptance of it? Make a motion, we accept the grant for the library that the Cannon Foundation?
I'll second.
Second.
Motion is second. Um, this is another. Feather in the cap over there, that's another hundred thousand, I mean, that's that's great.
Very good.
I I was at that meeting when the lady from the Cannon Foundation came in. We walked through it and it wasn't near it like it looks today, I mean, the walls run up when she went through it. But I didn't take them long to to do, I mean, after she came and looked at it. Wasn't long before they received notice that they were gonna get this found this grant.
Who who is the Cannon Foundation?
It's Cannon Town people from Concord.
Robin Hayes.
I thought it was Kannapolis.
Kannapolis.
Robin Hayes.
Kannapolis.
I think it's Kannapolis.
Kannapolis.
Robin Hayes' family, he used to be our senator, well, our representative or district eight.
Yeah.
And Richard Hudson took, he would, he would, Richard Hudson worked for him, he was his district manager and then he took over in that position.
Textile.
He owned a big plant, yeah, his his grandmother.
All textile man.
Textiles.
All right, there's a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries. All right, that was uh A, except, now there's a B, consider approval of the grant agreement. By between the Cannon Foundation Inc. and the Town of Aberdeen.
I'll make a motion, we consider approval of the grant agreement by and between the Cannon Foundation Incorporated and Town Aberdeen.
I second.
Motion is second. And Paul, you just discussed that, right?
Yes, sir. That's what's in the packet.
I'm sorry, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries, thank you. Number five, retention bonus payments.
So Mayor, as um uh introduced to you on Friday, yeah, as we took the due during the budget retreat. This is the uh request to go ahead and fund the retention bonus uh for staff members, both full-time. Regular, part-time and part-time employees working on, you know, a little bit less, there's a tiered amount, as you can see in the memorandum. To make it, you make it fair for those, depending on how much they work. And again, this is using funds that um have been saved in the salary benefits section of our budget for this year alone. So and there will be more, so we're not even using all of those funds just for this. And again, um I think it was stressed to you, you know, how important this is. And I know sometimes it may seem like, well, you know, our retention rate's about the same, but rest assured, it would not be even there, you know, but for this. I mean, really, when we talk about comparable salaries, which we'll talk more about, you know, at the budget meetings, you know, but for this as. Hey, this is not guaranteed every year, but it's been for a few years, we've been doing this, you can just add this right to your um to your salary. Um, it's a big add-on, which brings us a little bit closer in every single um, every single position, um best full-time. It brings you that much closer and it's, it truly is money in the bank and um as Regina said at the meeting. The employees truly look forward to this um when it's affordable. And there may come a year when it's not affordable and we'll be, we'll be the first to tell you, we can't afford it this year, unfortunately, but. Um, we don't think that's this year, we can't afford it and we do have it um, you know, lined out in our budget for this year. And that's why there's um, there's actually two motions that the board's in favor, you know, one is to consider the payments to eligible employees. And the other one is to consider the budget amendment to allow it to happen.
I'll make a motion that we approve the retention bonus payments to all eligible employees as of April first, twenty twenty-five, as presented at the budget retreat.
I'll second. Motion is second, full of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries, thank you. B?
I'll make a motion that we approved a budget amendment to allocate funds appropriately within the already budgeted dollars for the retention bonus payments.
Thank you.
There was a motion at second. Is it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Discussion.
Yeah, I just want to say that I'm really proud and happy that we're doing this, I think the town is doing the right thing and I appreciate it. Jar and all of you for this to work.
Absolutely.
And I agree with you on that.
And we have seen, especially with the uh weekly reports. Look at the hirings and the hocus, it's every week, if somebody's coming or leaving, somebody's coming or leaving.
That's right.
Yeah.
It's it's remarkable, uh, I mean, we used to have, remember, people that worked for the town, it'd be here twenty-five, thirty years. Those days are just about gone. I said, it's just about gone. But there was a bunch of them at one time. There was a bunch of them at one time. Uh, those days seem to be thin now, people are noble, uh, you know, somebody dangles some money in front of somebody somewhere else and they're gone. And we also have to compete and we're talking about Aberdeen, it's about ten thousand people, we got Fable next door, we got Sanford up the road. You know, it's hard to compete with, we don't have that much money, you go around.
Heard some stories.
And it it's tough, it's tough, you know, we hired somebody and some other town says, I got more money for you, a lot of them are gone. And I know the fire department is tough, cause those go out, those guys can go anywhere, cause they work on shifts. So, yeah, um, police also, so we're we're proud and happy with what we have and it's trying to keep them here, it's what we're doing with this. So we had a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, that carries, thank you. Six, other business.
We did both of them.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Other business?
I just wanted to bring up something, I, a couple of citizens had mentioned to me um about the speeding on Main Street. I know we've got the speeding from twenty miles per hour thereby the American Legion, but then it turns to twenty-five going out. Um, and then the um South Street's working very well, cause when I came tonight, there was a string of cars, but each one of them had to stop. Each one had to stop, if not, I bet they would have just been ch 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 ch, you know, down there, so that that's worked really well. So I don't know if, you know, anybody else feels like, but I just thought I'd bring it up, that some people that live down there that have kids said that. Once they get past that twenty miles and they get up, they just.
About Blue Street, they're going about fifty by the time they get up.
Right, right, so I just didn't know if it was anybody else's concern, I just. Thought I'd share that, cause on the way here, I saw some folks, and once they get past the the sign that says twenty-five. And they're speeding up toward getting to two eleven.
Have you ever been passed on Main Street? I have seen it, I have, I've been passed on Main Street.
Oh, really?
No, really, I'm not making that up. I turned, I turned out on Bethesda to come down Main Street and a car came out behind me. And I got down to about where the Bucking House is on Main Street. All of a sudden, I went, what's this, and somebody went right around me. Right, almost down there where the Legion hood is, somebody passed me on Main Street, they were in a hurry to get somewhere.
That's when you wish to stop, like turn red on them.
Well, it did, I I had hoped it would, but it didn't, they they got right on.
Right on through, huh?
Yeah, well, what do you do, I mean?
Well, you know.
What are your options?
Well, I know, when we were considering the no left turns into Aberdeen, I thought that might stop some of it, now we're not gonna do that. Because we've discussed talking about, you know, possibly that may not happen anytime, so I don't know. So now we're we may, it may not be a problem anymore, but like I said, just a couple of people shared it with me and I said, I'd bring it up and see if anybody else said they had any complaints.
If you think about, if you start where the Legion hood is, American Legion is, there's, that's that's a cross street, right? But if you go all the way out to the end, there's not another cross street.
If you turn to the.
Just turns. So putting a four-way stop like we did on South Street.
Yeah, it's not the same.
It won't work.
I wasn't suggesting necessarily, I was just saying that that's done well, because I think that was the, that was a a busier street.
And that one works, because it has a cross track, a crossway.
With no arm there.
Up the dog. Oh, gosh, where are those nice houses up there across where you live?
Campbell, Campbell Street.
Campbell, Campbell is is a T-intersection. If you put a three-way stop there, that would slow it down from there, but then it'd pick up speed.
Yeah.
From there going back downtown, I don't know what the answer is, uh, I don't, I'm not opposed to rumble strips or whatever, but.
Do they not, when two elevens finished, isn't that gonna be a bubble at the end?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So that's gonna fix the problem with it, ain't it?
But will Main Street dead in there?
Mm-hmm. I think it does.
Have access off of two eleven on.
That's fine, okay.
Am I incorrect?
You're right.
I think it's a bubble.
Yeah, it may be.
To the end, it's gonna be a.
You don't have access no more off of two eleven on the Main Street.
Well, that'll stop it.
One's two, that'll stop it. And if it is speeding, it'll be people that live in it.
Yeah, that's true, yeah. It'll be back on South Street.
Time's gonna.
Oh, they'll be back on South Street, but they have the four-way stop though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But that's, once that's finished, that's what, that's why we're remembering that place.
Well, it is an issue.
Well, they'll come down PD road and fly down Bethesda Avenue.
Anyone else, other business, other businesses, we're still talking.
You brought up the subject at the budget meeting about Page's library, I didn't know if that would be something anybody might be thinking in the head.
There there has to be some thought coming um at this fall sometime when um. We opened up the new library, we've still got another library, we gotta do something with that building. And uh I looked it up too and uh it said. Which one had, was the first, was it?
Durham.
Durham, but that can't be in the same building.
No, they got a new one in ninety-six.
See, that 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 takes it away, so Aberdeen may be the one, that may be the oldest one. Because if you look it up, if you type in on your computer, the second oldest public library in North Carolina, it comes up Aberdeen. But if you type in the first one, it comes up Durham, you know what it was, Durham.
Durham.
But they're not in the same building, it it's two different things.
You think they have an old one?
Well, I don't know, they may.
That we we need to, we should check that, um, cause otherwise we'd put up a new.
They do have an old one.
We'll claim the first.
I I I want to claim the first, if we can figure out who's not doing their job.
They they do have an old one, but something else is in.
And the one in Bath moved.
Is continuous operating library.
Yeah, in the same building, under what seventeen years, eighteen years, whatever. Uh, no, one nineteen seven, that'd be, do the math somebody. Um, but but I thought for a while, somebody had suggested it was Bath, which is the oldest town in North Carolina. But my son checked on that because he's in Little Washington and he said, yeah, they had a, there was, they had an old library, but they moved theirs into a public old schoolhouse. So it can't be Bath. So we may, I.
Yeah, as long as we keep it going with some some.
That's what we're talking about.
Yeah.
Well, you know, before Mayor, we had talked about the um keeping historical archival stuff.
There you go.
Yeah.
For the town and it could be other things, it could be anything from just town documents, maps, those kind of things. But also, I know there's a bunch of um, you know, historical things like in the Aberdeen um high school library.
Yeah.
Not that, cause they have their place, but things like that, that might be more appropriate there as opposed to.
Sure.
Have two two places for it, um, just artifacts of Aberdeen, really.
Make it a research library.
I think, I think that's the discussion that group.
Yeah.
And I think that's what they're talking about doing.
If we ever get.
We'd like to comment.
One of those newspapers that we went through so much to save or not save, I'm not sure what happened.
That would, if that would be a place to get them out of the train station and take them over there, that would be a resource, because they're just rocking the train station.
And then for research, um, that would be there, people can sit through it, yeah.
Uh, the other thing would be, uh, how would anybody get in it? And we can't close the door. Once we close the door, it's no longer public, I mean, it's not accessible.
We'll call Bob Martin.
Call Bob.
Add it to his.
Call Bob, get Bob to.
Add it to his list of things.
You mentioned that dress that's out at Malcolm Blue that need to be preserved, maybe that's something that you could. We could actually spend some money and get it preserved and put in some kind of case or something.
Whatever happened to it, did it ever get preserved, I don't know.
I think Adam said.
I think.
I don't think, I don't wish to read them.
I don't think it's still laying on the, I think it's on the bed.
Okay, yeah, well, well, he was gonna take it to somewhere, Rockingham or somebody to look at it or somebody was supposed to come and look at it, but I don't know whatever happened to it.
I'd rather see something like that, lime glass or something rather than sleeping on the bed.
Probably laying on the bed.
I saw, seen it.
Yeah, I think it was last time I saw it.
We've been trying to figure out what to do with that dress, boy, it just falls apart. Um, that's a historic piece of material, very historic.
The library system over in Carpets has talked about what they do for that, you know, keeping it like it is.
Okay, well, that's good.
They're not planning to do, let that go, I don't.
No, I don't want to let it go, because.
What I meant, it is something else.
Yeah, we we may find out, we're we're the oldest public library.
That's right, and they know that, and that's what they're, that's what they're doing.
And I asked Anna one time, if she would look into it, Anna, did you ever find anything? You ever find? Okay. We got a crack reporter in here. She needs to get on that beat.
I will, I will find out for you.
Well, we can't, what are you gonna find out?
Yeah.
Find out what the county is is.
Planning to do with the building, okay.
Yeah, well, it's our building.
It is, but I meant.
They're just gonna take the books out of there and move it over there.
No, they're they're planning to help, keep it alive with artifacts and things that you, you know, would want to have here in Aberdeen, so. But I think they still have some some plans for it to to help it.
Okay, well, they want to help.
Yeah, I will find out for sure.
Please find out.
I will.
Please find out.
I will do that for you.
Um. Security at Public Works, tell us about that, what can we do? Jangling fences and barbed wire is not working.
Yeah, we, we're still waiting on the quote from Central. Dan himself actually met with a another rep, Jeff at Central, he has provided the code. Have it back here.
Let us know what you find out, what, what it in, just motion detectors and would would lights come on if something, if something's moving or?
It would be like a siren alarm, it's a basically break line of sight. If you break the beam, it's when it activates, they just will not hear it.
I know it's a problem, cause it's out of out of sight over there. And we just can't keep taking hits like we've been taking over there and cutting. Uh, the wire to get in and catalytic converters being cut off a truck. the wire to get in and catalytic converters being cut off of trucks and tools being stolen.
I mean, it's just. Chavis, every time he mentions that, he can break in. Like, we won't expect this to answer.
Next up.
Yeah. They did what now? Electrify it.
Electrify the fence.
Hey, now the problem with that, no problem whatsoever. You wanna be that stupid, grab onto it. Well, anyway, here we are, anything else? Anybody? Anybody? What you know about you?
Don't know nothing.
Tell us about the, tell us about the library.
Library's going along, quick and right along. Everything's going well, we got, staying in there, they going, it's just gonna, it's gonna slow up a little bit now, the look, but other than that, they're still doing things and.
Got a good number on the, uh, the roof, um, I say roof, but surely the attic repairs. We're worried about that, but it's a lot of wood repair, um, the number wasn't as bad as it could have been.
So we're moving forward with that and there is, I told the mayor, there's a mock-up of the, of B board over there right now, so we can analyze that, move forward, but other than that, it's.
Oh, good.
And so, it's gonna work.
What is the front gonna look like when it fini, when it's finished? Is there gonna be like a?
And I have a stoop with, uh, some bricks, that, that's where they're selling the pavers.
Right.
Where if you buy them, they'll be out there, there's like an eight-foot area and then the rest of it'll be, uh, some other bricks and some landscaping. Go over to a, uh, a sidewalk that has the bricks on the side of it, like we do over at the Park, and right now, it kind of goes on the side of it and goes to the handicap ramp in the back.
Will it have like an overhang or something? I mean, right now, when you look at it, there's this door there, you know, on a flat surface. I didn't know if there's gonna be more of, of like an entrance look to it than just a.
I mean, when you walk in, there's a foyer.
Right, but I mean, on the outside.
But on the outside, I'm not even sure if there's a hole in it, there may be, I'd have to check, but there's not gonna be a stoop that, there's not a.
Nothing there, okay, it just looks like they would add something to the front.
There's a five-foot step right there and then it goes down to the brick pavers.
And they were breaking the ramp, did they go through, oh, it is.
There's still a lot of brick to sell.
Yes.
Anybody wants one with their name on it?
I bought one last week.
I have five, thank you. Don't need anymore.
Anyone else? Tim, you got anything over here?
No, I want something good.
Can you still buy bricks for the police station?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Someone ask me in that one, is that you?
See if you got any name.
Yes, sir, we're good.
We're good. Let's see, it's next, we're not meeting with you.
The nineteenth.
The nineteenth, okay, thank you.
Are the?
I've got it written down, I just have to keep it written down.
At your office, are they there at the front?
It's also online.
Online, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Make a motion to a chair.
I second.[1796.88]